Good morning and welcome to the Pauline County Water Commissioners April 28, 2015 Work Session. We're proud you're here. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize our invited guests and invited guests and elected officials. I see Mayor Davy in the room. I see Mayor Boyd Austin in the room. Who else do we have? Elected officials. We're graced today by Deputy Director Russ Pennington from Jifa and Kevin Clark from Jifa. And then also Boyd serves as the Jifa Chairman of that board. So it's great having you all here. Very, very exciting day. So we will move on with our agenda. Remind you to turn off all next tell so long and pagers as it does interrupt our production. We have the illustrious mayor. He just walked in the door. Good morning. Anybody else I'm missing? I think you all are big here. Our invocation and pledge will be offered by Pastor Beverly K. Stephens with Bethel United Methodist Church. Would you stand with me and give your answer?
Shall we do the pledge first or the invocation?
Did you hear it? You got it?
I had the floor. Don't give the preacher the floor. But since you have, and we have folks in here from law enforcement and from, looks like first responders, would I, could I ask them to come to the front so in this time we can pray for them because things are rough these days? Even though I do not know what the document is for today, I can tell that it's going to be a full session and it's probably going to be tense. I'm from a small county myself in South Carolina. And so as we begin this session, I invite you all to pull hands together. Come on, don't be like my preacher. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you today to take care of the business of this community. We come before you because we are seeking your will and ask that throughout all of this that your grace and power and guidance and wisdom will be with us. Before us today are those who serve seeking to protect, defend, and make whole communities through enforcing laws, caring for people who are in danger. These are men and women who serve faithfully seeking to do your will and to bring peace and wholeness. We ask for your particular guidance on them, your protection, your ever-flowing grace. And may they in all of their interactions with others be guided by the love of neighbor and may all those who interact with them be equally blessed with that love. And as we go into the difficult decisions that we have to make, Lord, help us to understand that we have more in common than we have in differences, that we share your godly image and that we are all loved by you for you indeed came into the world to save the world because of your intense love. We ask these things in the strong name of Jesus Christ and through the power of your spirit. And the people of God said, Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five people wishing to speak on agenda items. Minutes, the April 14, 2015 work session minutes and April 14, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for you as you. If you are a veteran, would you mind standing at the time? Thank you all. We are having a veterans' park out front. We'll talk about that in a little bit honoring you folks. And then a week from Friday, on May the 8th, at the air show, there'll be a big celebration honoring our veterans at the air show. So we invite you to get with Dave Carmichael and get signed up and be honored and we'll talk about the veterans' park a little bit later today. A lot of people are here because they love this individual and the dedication and the I think I said one time she went back to where they actually had to crank the front of the car. Connie, we can't thank you enough for all your years of dedication and devotion and transportation. So if you'll come forward and bring your family. We've got a few things we want to say about you. So Connie, you come stand right here. All y'all come right over here. Y'all gotta get with Byron's brother. They can't hit you over there. I just want to point out that one of the best basketball players that ever played for Dallas High School, Byron Coe, world famous.
I've got a little thing I'd like to read to y'all. Good morning. Today I'd like to recognize Ms. Connie Prater. Accompanying her today is her son Steve Cersey, daughter Beth Frye, brother and sister-in-law Byron and Joan Nicole. Ms. Connie Prater began her career in Pauline County in April 1992. At the time, the county did not have a DOT. It was called the Road and Fleet Office. Ms. Connie was the administrative assistant to the office. The building was located on Industrial Way North, did not have air conditioning and very little heat. She maintained all the records for road repairs, she entered customer calls and complaints, and was responsible for the maintenance records of all county vehicles, equipment, and sheriff's vehicles. Another task included in her duties for first three years was the weekly reporting of gas used by county vehicles. She actually carried that wooden stick out to the tanks and checked it each day and week to make sure our records were good and make sure we had fuel. She will agree that Pauline County has come a long way. In her 23 years, she has worked diligently during many, many events of storms, snow and ice, and the unforgettable blizzard of 1993. Hurricane Opal, the flood of '09, on and on she was here. Her dedication for the last 23 years to not only DOT but to Pauline County is remarkable. She is always eager to unselfishly assist her coworkers, citizens, and the community. Connie was consistently rated exceeding in her performance reviews. We don't think enough about the employees in the office who do much of the work behind the scenes. Connie provided many of the vital tasks in order for DOT to operate efficiently. Not only has she been faithful to Pauline County, first and foremost, she is a devoted Christian. She attends faith Baptist church. She is active in all church events as well as providing weekly devotions to the Women's Jail Ministry. Her plans after retirement include enjoying time with her husband Larry, children, and two grandsons Eli and Dakota. Along with caring for her mother, Ms. Bessie Byrd, who is 94, I understand. She also desires to visit hospitals and nursing homes to offer Bible study and pray and provide comfort to those in need. Personally, she's done that for me and I really appreciate her. Friday, May 1st, at the administration building, first floor, from 2:00 to 4:00 in the cafeteria area, we're going to have a reception for her. And I'd like all of y'all to drop by and share some food with her and spend a little time with the county. Retirement is a day that we all look forward to in our life. However, we are truly going to miss her. She's always been the glue that has held us together for many, many years. We wish her the very best in her retirement and are honored this day to say we have been blessed by her. Thank you.
Thank you.
A long time ago, God told me to say that I hope that Jesus be important to me and should pray for me. And I've prayed faithfully for all of y'all 23 years, so I'm gonna keep on praying.
Wow, man.
Y'all, y'all have got prayers, everyone out here. And I just pray that y'all would love what it under the tip, work for the good of this county because I love public care with all my heart. And I thank God that I had the privilege to pay a public care in this hallway. And I'm gonna try to continue to help public care and I love you 23.
Thank you, God. Water Commissioner would like to present Public Safety Award to firefighter Sam Ballard with the Pauline County Fire Department. If you'll come up.
My pleasure to present the Board of Commissioners Public Safety Award to firefighter Sam Ballard. Sam began his career with Pauline County as a volunteer firefighter shortly after he graduated from high school. After a couple of years as a volunteer, he was hired as a full-time firefighter in June of 2004. Sam's worked as a firefighter in various station assignments throughout his career. His current assignment is Station 11 in the Bimford View. During his career, Sam's worked on his own to obtain his Emergency Medical Technician Certification as well as attending many classes both here and in the county at the state training facility as well. He's not only a great firefighter, Sam has a passion for serving his fellow firefighters and other public safety personnel. Sam volunteers his time as a member of the Pauline County Fire Honor Guard and has become an integral part of its success. He currently travels all over Georgia representing Pauline County at firefighter ceremonies. He's also become a certified instructor and teaches at the Georgia Public Safety Training Center, educating other firefighters from all over the south as Honor Guard members. He recently became a member of the Georgia's Last Team, which works directly with Pauline firefighters' families. He travels to National Fire Academy every year in Edensburg, Maryland, and serves as a representative there for Pauline County as well as all the Pauline firefighters. Sam's work ethic and dedication to fellow firefighters and the citizens of Pauline County is matched by very few. He's a great ambassador for the department and just a fantastic young man. I've known Sam for a long time. He's well worthy of this honor and he's very well respected by all of his peers. Sam, congratulations.
Gary Gullis always shows these to the caliber guys, you know. Sam Ballard, thank you so much. Some of your guests may wonder what in the world's going on, but Pauline County has a lot to celebrate. And guys, thank you all for what you do. Appreciate yous. Now I'm going to have Tabitha Pollard, if she would come up here and any of your team in the room.
Yes.
If you'll come to stand right up here, I'll talk about you a little bit. This is not an easy award to accomplish, but it's one that happens over and over and over for Pauline County. I think when you have consistency within your staff, it helps you build a great team that Tabitha has here. And we were notified that they will be receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financing. It's the highest form of recognition in government accounting, financing, and reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So I'll read you what the certificate says. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to Pauline County by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GF.OA, for its comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR. Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals in a department or agency designated by the government that's primarily responsible for bearing the award-winning CAPR, which has been presented to Pauline County Finance Department. CAPR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and users groups to read the CAPR. The GF.OA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, DC. Let's hear it for a great financial man. Tabitha, you were involved in saying things today?
I was.
Okay, thank you. Step over to the side. Y'all be stay up there while she talks about you.
I want to tell you a little bit about where that award comes from, how many years we've had it, and what some of the acronyms stand for. Government Finance Officers Association is a national association of government finance officers made up of lots of individual entities, counties, states, and cities, municipalities. And this is about, I think, 19, this was a little bit of a surprise to me, so I didn't realize we were going to discuss this today. I didn't pull the numbers. But it's year 19 that we've received it. The CAPR is what we send in to get this award, and the CAPR is our comprehensive annual financial report. It's available online for anybody to review. GF.OA sets out a list of criteria that we have to meet, and if we meet that and we submit for the CAPR, it's reviewed by Panel 3, and then the award is given. And I want to say thank you to all of the finance staff because it takes each and every one of us. They all work very diligently and very hard to get the job done. And I'm just going to take a time to say thank you.
Thank you very much. The Water Commissioners would like to present a Water Professionals Appreciation Day Proclamation to Lori Ashmore, Water System Director. Before you come up here, anybody else?
We've got numbers of water teams in a couple of departments.
Do you mind if I'm on TV? That's better. Water Professionals Appreciation Day, whereas the Georgia Water Quality Control Act was passed by the Georgia General Assembly and signed into law in 1964 by the Governor Carl Sanders, and whereas for the first time of passage, the act, any of Georgia's surface waters were extremely polluted, serious water quality problems existed all over the state of Georgia. Whereas the state established the Georgia Water Quality Control Board, later reconstituted as the Georgia Environmental Protection Division as a result of the 1972 reorganization of the state government under Governor Jimmy Carter and Governor Sanders-appointed RS Rock Howard to be the Boards of Decadent Protection. Whereas over the ensuing four decades, billions of federal, state, and local dollars have been invested in planning, designing, and constructing modern publicly-owned wastewater treatment facilities throughout the state, Georgia Water Professionals are committed to operate these facilities to maintain and assist in compliance with extremely stringent standards. Whereas the quality of water in Georgia's waters has improved dramatically throughout the great state over the few years since the original passage of Georgia Water Quality Control Act, and huge strides have been made over the past several decades in providing safe and reliable water at the CAPR out in the state. Whereas it says that we have experienced thus far, the success that we will have in the future is made possible by the tremendous dedication and efforts of Georgia's water professionals. Water Professionals provide critical services that are most often taken for granted or are essential to virtually everything we do. Therefore, be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of Pauline County Water Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Monday, May the 4th, 2015, this Water Professionals Appreciation Day in Pauline County and recognize the men and women who work tirelessly in the county to ensure that our tap water is safe and that our water resources are protected and properly managed. Specifically, we want to recognize and thank the staff in managing the Pauline Water System, Department of Community Development, Directions Division, and Department of Transportation and Stormwater. Thank you all, and let's stand up and thank you.
We can take a question.
Don't let the board hear that. Say anything yet? You guys stand up here while she talks about them all? We did travel for a while. I'm in some pain.
I just wanted to give you a little background on the professionals that we have within Pauline County. And it's not just the water system. There are three different departments in Pauline County that have, that have standard hold credentials in various facets of water resources stewardship, the water system, community development, and DOT. We're distributing safe water to over 42,000 customers. We're collecting and treating wastewater from 8,800 homes and businesses and managing stormwater runoff and quality from watersheds that cover over 200,000 acres. The addition of the Richland Creek Reservoir will require additional licensed professionals to treat water from our own source. The 31 water professionals that we have today hold a total of 49 licenses and certifications, including 26 state-issued licenses to practice in their field. Annually, this staff puts in a total of more than 375 hours of continuing education to maintain those licenses. In recognition of Water Professionals Appreciation Day, just wanted to make you aware that members of the water system staff will be volunteering on a stream cleanup in the area of Sweetwater Creek at Pine Valley Road this Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. No invited guests, bid awards, discuss action to purchase 9.44 wetlands credits from mitigation management in the amount of $271,880. Tabitha, you want to discuss this? I believe Lori, this is also an agenda.
That's correct. My knowledge of this transaction, I wonder if it's 10 or 20. I got $10 or something like that. However, on March 27th, we did accept proposals to purchase the stream credits and wetland mitigation credits. You have the participants attached to your backup. We have five banks with three proposals issuing process for the, proposals for these credits. We only have one participant for the wetlands credit, and it has been reviewed and determined that with the availability that it is a very good quote. And it was for 9.44 wetlands credits in the amount of $271,880 to mitigation resource group. We also have stream credits. We are recommending awards the lowest bidder, four-star, in the amount of $29 per credit for 295,390 credits. That that total comes back to $8,566,310. The steps after this approval is awarded will be to proceed to purchase the first 30% of those. That gets us started with the reservoir, and then we will issue a contract with the proposer for the award.
Lori, you want to add anything to what she had to say?
Nothing additional.
We're in a great water team, running Paulville, working very closely with the Jifa and the team. We fight very close to our EPD Director, Jed Turner. He's also known as the Water czar of the water wars, Georgia, Florida, and Alabama. He carries the message directly from the Governor. Richland Creek is one of his top, if not the top, project he has in the state for reservoir. When you back up water, when you change water, then you have to pay to do that. So that's where we are with this, is that we do the stream bank and we do the mitigation credits. I'll take number one. Any kind of discussions I'd have on that one. It's pretty sensitive and vulnerable, but you know, it's just a walk to talk about.
Would like the, just the citizens to know that this is also going toward a water support authority.
Yes, yes.
And they've worked on this for a long time. Correct?
The water agents who were advisory board addressed this at their meeting, and they made a recommendation to you for approval.
They were, that was a 100%?
Yes, it was.
And everybody was present?
Everyone was present. We had 100 for, everyone was in favor of that. And wanted to just point out also that we're about 10%, 10% under our original estimate for cost of mitigation with the pricing that we were selling.
In 1999, 2000, 2001, mitigation credits have been bought and for less than $1 million. So you can see what it's taken the time to build this, to get the approvals, to study bats. So you see what it's taken the time to build this, get the approvals, study bats, and darters, and trees, and everything else along the way. We've come a long way, and we are awfully, awfully close. Number two, discuss action to purchase 295,000, 295,390 stream credits for the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, four-star, in the amount of $8,566,310. We discussed this, have it, as part of the ongoing discussion. We have three bids that you looked at for number two.
Yes, sir. Is this one we have? We have three proposals proposing out of five different banks for those credits.
And what happens is that they have to be within the edilaw basis. So you have to be very careful where you can't just go buy mitigation or stream bank credits anywhere that they have to be within the edilaw zone. Anything else you want to say?
All of these proposals, we only accepted proposals from our primary service area. So all of these are in the, in the preferred area for, for.
And the next closest bidder or proposer was like $4 higher, which was about $800,000?
$5, right, yeah.
So the total cost of it, instead of $8,500, it would have been over $9 million?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Thank you all. Reports from committees and departments, Michael Justice, I think you want to talk about upcoming events for our parks.
Yes, sir. Congratulations to all those that have been honored this morning. With the upcoming first anniversary event of our, I thought we'd just a minute to share some, some events that are scheduled there for you this summer. The first one that's coming to us after this date will be on May 7th, which is part of the National Day of Prayer activities. And I believe this holiday, someone just talked about that a little bit, so I won't belabor that too much. Friday and Saturday, May 14th through the 16th, Relay for Life will be out here at Veterans Park again. First year was last year, it was very successful, so they'll, they'll be coming back. Saturday, June 6th will be the first summer concert. That concert is going to be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. I saw this right here today, so we thank them for that. Concert will begin at 7 that night. June 27th and August 1st are also concert nights. Those are Saturday nights, they'll be in the amphitheater down on the end of the property. August 15th will bring the fall movie back. Don't know what movie that will be yet. It will be family-oriented, I can promise you that. October 10th will be Public Safety Day, you know, use the grounds for that event all day as well. Trying to plug in some, some September activities as well. So as you can see, then the park is going to be used for several large free events. We invite you all to come out and enjoy it. Very pleased with the end result of that project and the use. Very thankful for your guys' support in making that happen.
Today, I believe you'd like to have veterans who could get the water.
Yes, sir. 12:30 in front of the Formal Pavilion. That's the small one that's out here on this end. Any veterans that would be able to join us, we certainly appreciate you being out there. One other big event, the July 11th event, we never do it on the 4th, the July, we'll do it the Saturday after, and that's a cost measure. So, you know, come on out to take a formal that night, July 11th, concert fireworks activities, that sort of thing. Any questions on any of those events, I'd be glad to answer. Yes, sir. One other tidbit of information if I can. Last fall, the board approved a security camera project for us on Silvercomin Trail. Just to give you a little bit of background and update, more detailed presentation will be coming to you later in May, but all 47 cameras are now live and viewable. We had four cameras, you know, last fall, we have 47 now. So we'll present some more detailed information at later P D in May. That happened because of your support and because of coordination from departments, IT, Sheriff, DOT, 911, all those guys, so we're very thankful for you to have them.
Thank you. Hey, Mike, all those cameras from Pauline County, Cobb County, Blueberry County, all the way through?
No, sir. That was phase one. Our cameras now stretched from Homer Leggett Park and Harv up to Carrot Drive. Yes, sir.
We had an incident Friday week, pretty bad incident. We are blind and hopeless, a lady mistaken the gas pedal, brake pedal, and it was pretty serious out in front of our services building. We, we had a lost supply, so ask you to keep that family in prayers, and we'll have Ashley Henson and Lori, I believe you're going to talk a little bit on this today too, so you can just quick.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Post Commissioners. Just want to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank you for allowing us to come here and speak with you guys. Obviously, it's not a situation we want to talk about a whole lot, but just to give you guys some information on what occurred, I put together a brief PowerPoint presentation. And as you can see from looking at the screen, you guys have the packets that should be on your screen as well. You can follow along if you want. The incident occurred on Friday, April 17th, at 12:46 PM right here at the administration building. So just to give you a brief overview of where we are, I found in my experience that looking at pictures allows you to see where exactly it occurred, because after talking to some folks, a lot of people didn't really know exactly where it did occur. So if you look at the map, you can see the red arrow and obviously where the, where the incident occurred, and we'll have some, some more detailed photos here in just a moment. So if you look at this, this photo here, you can see where the vehicle actually left the parking area and then traveled under the covered breezeway area, and then the vehicle came to rest on that pillar that's indicated. So at about 12:46, a vehicle was coming into, traveling westbound, coming into the parking lot, and was going to park in one of the horizontal parking areas. And when the vehicle pulled into that horizontal parking area, at this point, it's still in investigation, we don't know exactly what occurred, but nonetheless, the vehicle accelerated. And when the vehicle accelerated, it jumped the curb and made a left in between a light pole, you'll see in a better photo in a moment, in between the light pole and a pillar, the vehicle drove directly through that, that area, and it made a hard left, and that's when the vehicle started striking some of the pedestrians. So if you look at this photo, this is actually a photo from the day that the incident occurred. You can see in the boat, the bottom portion of your photo here, level number one, this is where the vehicle struck the building, the glass area, the permits portion of the building, and this is where the, the first victim was struck, and this was the victim that was fatally wounded. And so as the vehicle traveled on, you can see how it kind of veered back to the left, and it struck the planter, level number two, and that's where it hit the second, third victims. And ultimately, it came to rest at point number three, as you can see, which is where the vehicle stopped. And at that point, there were, there were five people that were involved in this particular incident. So as you can tell, this is a pretty, pretty traumatic situation. I'm sure everybody in this room can attest to fate. I never personally thought this could ever happen here at our, our government facility, and it's just such a, such a tragedy. And so this is, if you look at this photo, this is the parking spot where the driver, Ms. Wilber, attempted to park. And if you look, you can see where there's the light pole to the left, and then to the right is the, one of the pillars of the building. She drove straight in, and then from there, you can go back and see where she, she hit the, the glass, and then made that, that left and struck the, the planter, and you can see the planter, how it's damaged. So she continued on and struck the vehicle, or the victim, rather. So the people involved, and this is all public information, this is all information that's been released to the media. Ms. Marlene Wilber, 81 years of age, was the driver of the vehicle. The first victim was Linda Lottier-Jones, she was a seven-year-old female. The second victim was Jessica Arguin, 35 years old, and if you saw any of the news reports, she is the lady that had the two five-month-old twins, Santiago and Luisa. And I'll tell you a little more about that in a moment. And the, the final victim was Mr. Kenneth Earl Bennett, he's six years of age. Just from a, I guess, law enforcement standpoint, in these particular situations, although this is county property, and the Sheriff's Office has jurisdiction, where a vehicle's involved, where it left the roadway, the Georgia State Patrol was called in to handle the investigation. So all the actual investigation was done by the Georgia State Patrol, and they came in, they were the lead agency as far as the investigation goes. They actually called in their, their SCIRP team, which is the specialized collision reconstruction team. And for those of you that know, that's the, the team that works at GSP, they actually come in and they reconstruct the accidents, they come out with transit, total stations, they actually are trained similar to surveyors. And they come in and they can reconstruct that accident scene, detail by detail, and determine what has occurred. They can go in, inside a vehicle and pull the, the black box inside of a vehicle. Many don't know that there's actually a box in the vehicle that records data, so they can do that. They interview witnesses, victims, they do all that. Ultimately, later that evening on the 17th, Ms. Wilber was charged with vehicular homicide of the second degree. She was arrested and booked into our jail and was released a short time later on her own recognizance. This is, you know, I, I got interviewed a lot by the, by the Atlanta-area media, and they wanted to know, you know, what we thought about it, and, you know, things like that. But having been out there when it actually occurred, I was, I was here not too long after it occurred, and it was, I guess the best way you could describe it was a chaotic scene. It was, there were people everywhere, it was 12:46 on Friday, as many of you are aware, this is a busy complex, people are going to pay their taxes, the tags, they're doing all those type of things, so it was, it was extremely busy. The pedestrians were actually walking eastbound back towards Dallas, and the vehicle was traveling westbound, so that's how it struck the, the victims. And, you know, like, like we said, one of the, one of the people were fatally injured. But I do want to say this, the public safety team that, that came that day, we had the State Patrol, the Sheriff's Office, the Marshals Bureau, the Dallas Police Department, our Fire Department, and Metro Atlanta Ambulance, along with 911, all those people came together along with citizens, and it was, was amazing to see in such a chaotic situation how everybody pulled together, and, and we took charge and, and did the best with what we could. It was a horrible scene, but everybody did an excellent job to try to mitigate any further, any further problems. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those.
Lori, you want to join us? We had a team of folks who just fell into water. That's one of those rare timeframes where all five of the commissioners and our county attorney were in Savannah, attending our state convention, which is very, very rare that one person's not back here, but I'm telling you, I could be proud of it. When you see a young man like Ashley coming forward, good as job, I chased his diaper. You know, you think, oh my goodness, how impressive, y'all look like a pair of, the Marshals Department were amazing. I was on my phone with Leanne about the whole afternoon, back and forth, but it was, it was a great day. So Brian, you want to, you and Lori want to talk just a little bit about?
I'm concerned to talk after you talk about changing diapers.
I never changed Brian's diaper.
Never will, sir. Sometimes a little humor helps when you have situations like this. To say the least, as Ashley described, it was certainly a traumatic and chaotic situation. Where the car wrecked the building, had folks that are customer service clerks, as well as some of our permit techs, were literally 10, 15, get away from that. None of them were, were injured. Certainly, the folks who experienced that experienced a significant problem. We did close the office for that afternoon, and actually had a lot of assistance from a lot of different folks, we'll talk about that in a second, but we had the employees, we actually got them up here, I think we had a lot of company with each other. We had several folks, I'm probably going to be remiss in naming, I'm going to try to give you a quick list. We did have some folks from the Fire Department that came out, offered some counseling, some board, prepared some assistance. And what you find out when you have stuff like that happen is, we, we have tremendous resources right here, right here with our own employees. Fire Department, we had Greg Ellsbury, Tim King, John Turner came out with the Sheriff's Department, and Joey Meeks came out, and Sheriff Fellige also came out later that afternoon, to go on and tell the folks, the employees who witnessed this. Certainly mentioned the Marshals Office, and Leanne, her staff, very involved in the scene. Rebecca was communicating information, Leanne was communicating information to you. We had somebody that I'd like to really give a lot of appreciation and recognition to is Dr. Keith Stell, New Georgia Baptist. He was one of the first people up here to come and help with counseling, and up a note to me, I found out that he's very well versed in that. He does help a lot of clinicalists, stress debriefings is what typically do after an incident like this. Very, very well versed in that, very helpful. Lori's making arrangements for him to come back out. He was out as well Monday morning, the offices that, that told about 10 o'clock Monday morning, and he was out here with them on Monday morning as well. Certainly appreciate that, and again, I was very impressed with his assistance, I think the employees really connected with him, and it was extremely helpful to them. Certainly in the Water Department, Lori, great assistants, James Steele, Mike Kinsley, and the departments, Bruce Coyle, had Steve Turner's assistants, building maintenance staff, we certainly secured the building, Tabitha, had, she and some of her folks, Michelle, I think went down and secured the cash drawers, so the employees would have to go back down there, close it up for the day. My staff, Tara, Ashley, Diana, all did various things in terms of coordinating some counselors, been there with the employees. I know I'm probably missing somebody, but I wanted to try to mention some of those. So if y'all as well came out the days to follow, I appreciate your support for them, and really at this point, our, our ongoing role with them is continue to be supportive of them, continue to offer the resources, whether it's individual counseling, group counseling, folks like with Dr. Stell, and just encourage you to also, to say, be supportive of them, stop by, check in with them, take that day.
As Brian mentioned, the, the incident that occurred was right outside our windows. As you can imagine, had quite a traumatic impact on both the people at the front counter waiting, waiting on customers, to, to those who came on the scene within minutes afterwards. This occurred right during lunch, so we had some people who were out, some people who were, were in covering various functions. As Brian said, we did close down that afternoon. Want to thank Will Lyons and his team for getting, getting our phones set up to the point to let people know that while the office was closed, that they were still able to transact business with us that afternoon, online or, or by phone. The, we had a wonderful team of support, and, and I want to say that that's not only this, that afternoon, but ongoing. It, it's still very fresh. I think there was still a lot of raw emotion on, on the team, and we are trying to be not only supportive, but very flexible, so that we maintain service to our customers, to our walk-in and phone customers, while, while we respect the, the healing that is, that is occurring on our team, and just being, being there for them. The support we've gotten from the chaplains, from fire and sheriff, and from Dr. Stell has, have been phenomenal. I, I talked about the outreach and the support we got a few months ago when, with the workplace accident. This was, it just took up even another notch. And just really want to, want to, want to thank everyone for the support for our water systems, customer service team that over these, this last period.
I'd ask you to keep them in your prayers when you witness something like this, it's very chronic, and it's, it's tough, and it'll take.
very traumatic, and it's, it's tough, and it'll take weeks and months to get over it. Maybe, you know, possible change of venue for folks to request that, and also for the family, their foster loved ones. And I, I'm sure that one lady that caused that, her life has changed, and also, so keep all these families in mind, and I thank you all, what a wonderful team we have. Thank you. I'm going to walk script here just in case we've got a long, long session. We have dignitaries here from Atlanta that I know need to return. I don't see anyone wishing to speak on new business items, number one, and number two, so I'll try to get into those that we talk about right now. And number one, discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute a modification of promissory note and loan agreement with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, J F O, for loan project number W S 12 L 13 W R. Laurie, I believe you have a team of folks who have come to speak and let's talk about this.
The original loan agreement was executed in April, on April 23rd of 2013, for $29.1 million. J F O has offered to modify the terms of that loan agreement for the Richland Creek reservoir. The, the benefit of it is that it extends that, the period of time for no interest to accrue, and beyond the, the periods that were designated in the original agreement. Just to summarize the, this agreement, there is no interest until the earlier of three years from the time we make our first draw or project completion. There is 1% per, per annum interest until either project completion with us providing drinking water to, to the community, or October 1st of 2021. And then thereafter, the interest is at a rate of 1.82%. And we also updated the project budget and project schedule as, as part of this loan modification.
Kevin, you want to speak on?
Oh, I'll just add a little bit to that, actually, I won't really add anything, but I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, thanks for having us here today, appreciate it. Years ago, wise men must told me what I get before the customer like this to practice the three means, and that's be brilliant, breathe, and be gone. Being brilliant, you know, happens, but I can breathe and be gone. But I do want to say, what we're trying to do is, is get our loans all in, in the same type of brain work that we have three of, we've got. And, and given how these projects evolved, we wanted to work within timeframes that were, that were timed to, timed to events that will happen primarily for, for issuance and things like that. So, as, as opposed to constantly modifying things as, as, as projects go through their iterations, we thought we would just tie it to certain milestones. So, that's basically the gist of it.
If there's anything you want to add, add to that, good. Lloyd, anything as to the chairman that you performed?
I'm just proud to be able to be a part of the project, and to work with a group that government really works here. What he talked about streamlining is making it good for the customers, who are our local governments, in land, water, and energy resources.
Any questions? Number two, discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, J F O, for the state direct investment, S D I, and low-interest loan for transmission of improvements to Sonosha and Richland Creek reservoir.
On January 9th of this year, J F O proposed providing $15 million in state direct investment, and another $8 million in low-interest loans in the Richland Creek reservoir program, under the governor's water supply program. And the, the intent was to ensure that Poling County is able to serve more of the residents from the Richland Creek reservoir, and to assist in positioning us to eliminate purchases from Cobb Marietta Water Authority. Since that time, staff have been working with J F O to develop this memo of understanding that, that's in your package and in front of you today. For the, for that investment, the, the, Poling County would construct and design, construct the pipeline, and it would be substantially in the G dot, G dot right-of-way. The state of Georgia, under the, under the S D I, would own the pipeline, but Poling County will have the full responsible charge of the pipeline operations. And we agree that Poling County will cease water purchases from Cobb Marietta Water Authority by the end of the year of 2032.
Kevin, if you want to step up, I, I know we had some sticky issues in, in this memorandum of understanding. There is a cutoff date, but at the same time, droughts and other things happen, we will keep that line of communication over, open, and the line could be open for possible emergency type situations, and if there's ever a problem with what we're doing, my question.
Yes, Your Honor, yes, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to say two things, because two questions, I think, come to mind with, with this approach that the state's taking with, with some of the reservoir projects, and it's, it's part of the state direct investment program. And the first one would be, you know, why are we interested in, in Richland Creek? And to us, it's a, it's a local water supply project that has tremendous regional impact. And, and the fact that may have an effect on lessening ultimate demand on Alatuna, how that ties into what the Corps of Engineers are doing, and the state of Georgia's doing, and all the negotiations, the ongoing litigation, and yada, yada, yada. You can see where, while you guys have a, a, a local water supply project that has a profound effect in the region, so that's our interest in it. And, and by working with your, your team and trying to make sure that we're able to assist in extending that, getting that project operational and utilized throughout the county benefits the state getting that sooner, and trying to do that faster. So, that's really part of our interest and our regional interest in that. Now, the other thing that comes to mind is that, why do you have to own it? Why does the state have to own it? Who wants to be partners with the state? Nobody wants to do that, we want to do that. But, but the reality is, we're using general obligation bonds for these purchases, and as such, those bonds require that they be spent on property of the state. So, we have to own that, and we will lease it to Poling County for a period of 30 years at a non-hold, non-hold lease payment, or rent a few dollars a year. But that's, that's what we do, we have to do that in order to utilize those bonds. So, those are usually the two points that I want to explain, those are usually, those are nuances to the transaction.
We're, so we're at the vicinity of $82 million, and I'm not sure if the $15 million is in that number or not. It's not in that number. But what they said was just, we want to give you an enhancement of getting off Cobb Marietta faster. There's a million gallons per day if you build it run side, it'll take a certain period of time to come off Cobb Marietta, if you build it on larger sides, you can be off Cobb Marietta. The other thing that we battle with is monies that we have received, and, and it goes back to 2000, 2001, when we had, what we call earmarks. And money can be spent on items, and we're still working with how to be able to utilize that money, but it's still obligated to Poling County. Some of these have a date that they expire, so what we've tried to do is we're way ahead of the plan, and, but a lot of things, and some people wait till they get the money before they start planning. We've gone way ahead of that, and have a wonderful team. Kelly Comstock, if you'll say, Kelly's here with Ronnie Caldwell, you've heard him speak before. They have put a website together, it is called, Laurie?
R C R water dot com.
R C R water dot com. Frequently asked questions and answers are on there. We've taken this team, of course, a long time ago to Bartow County, met Clarence Brown, we gave Clarence Hurley, it's the sole commissioner, we've since worked with Steve Taylor. We have recently met with Hiram and Brazwell, have a planned meeting with Alice, then we made a trip to Cartersville, and met with the city of Cartersville. We were asked at one time, would you please come in and, and try to build this reservoir together? And looking at it, they had, they had what they needed, resources. The other thing I learned is that when water comes out the bottom of the Alatuna Dam, it's filled with iron and manganese, you can't make beer and carpet with iron and manganese and water. So, Cartersville pulls from the top of Alatuna where that water has not yet been affected, and you make carpet, and the Budweiser plant up in Cartersville, you can't beer. So, they said it would be hard to distinguish water systems and not have it all flow together and cause us further problems. So, we've had to reach out to other communities, work with them, see how this works, get approval, and be able to move forward. So, it's not been an easy task, but Kevin Clark and Russ and the whole team. We, we do have a local resident who works on this, Dave Rainey. His title is?
He's in charge of our construction management.
Construction management, one of our own here, so he's, works extremely hard to make sure that this happens for Poling County. Any questions y'all have? Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, Kevin, you might want to talk about the end of that 30-year period and the option to purchase after the state investment with general obligation bonds or?
Yeah, there's, there are a couple of things we could do, and one of them is, you know, you can really buy out the state's interest at some point, or we could even maybe deed it back to you with provision or, or a reversion, that if it's no longer used for a front, for public purpose, then that, that line is back to the state. So, there's a couple of options that we'll go through, and hopefully when we're doing the intergovernmental agreement, we'll contemplate all of those things.
Yeah, I guess the chairman asked me to add to your statement about the emergency of, Lyons still let open Cobb, so we need, the emergency will still go, we get it worse both ways. Once we have our own water reservoir, we will be able to supply Cobb County, and if they have an emergency and they need our water, right?
That's great, I mean, you know, how, how those arrangements work are, are between the forces of local governments, our interest is to try to get some stress on the Alatuna Dam.
I'd like to also just make a point on both of those new business items, one and two, both of those went before the water sewer board, and again, they were 100% there, 100% approval, recommendation to Kangus, and then we have been working on this information for quite a few months, but we also spent some time, Laurie asked more yesterday, two of us at 10:00, two of us at 2:00, and to go over all this. I just wanted the public to know, because I've had a couple of calls concerning the items and what they were. Anything? Okay, and this time, I'm going to take a quick break here, at the big working here, we'll be back in about seven minutes. Thank you.